And the first, are we going? Okay, first order of business is pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Minutes for May 3rd meeting. Should have those in your packets.
Who was written?
Any discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, they're not numbered.
Last page, top of the page, Stacey Marchionni. I would propose going to the end of that paragraph, putting a period after arrogant and cutting off, truncating the rest of that.
I'm sorry, doing what to the rest? Deleting?
I think it's consistent with sort of the, we do some details more often than others. I think most, I think most of our comments tend to be very detailed. So I think that would be consistent.
Any other comments? We will discuss in the correspondence section. Stacy did send us an email requesting that we change the minutes. And so if anyone wants to change them pursuant to that email or any other ways, this would be the time to do it. If anyone would like to. Anything else that people would like to change? Okay. So do you want to move to amend? Oh, you did move to amend.
Yeah, we don't tend to do motions.
Okay. So we will vote on Nate's amendment unless anyone disagrees with the amendment. All in favor of approving with Nate's amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on those minutes? Okay, all in favor? Aye. Minutes are done. We are on to immediate business and the first item is public comments.
Kimberly Black, Meeting House Hill. I apologize if this has been talked about, how you guys are gonna present high school contracts or whatever on the ballot for March. And this is probably a little early, but I was thinking that when the time comes, something I would like to see is perhaps some choices. I know that's not traditionally how things are done. Bring your best idea forward. But since this is kind of easy, something like how you had presented the the school where the first option was this, and then if that passes, then the other thing would go. Something similar to that just came to mind, where like the first option would really be the ideal what you guys have all really liked to bring. The second would be something along the lines of if number one fails, would the people like to do X, Y, Z? I think at least two options, something like that on the ballot. It's potentially free, might get you guys somewhere with voting next year. Heaven forbid they cut down the first choice and you guys are here fighting with it. So that was just my thought. A bit earlier, if you need to see counsel, but just a little bit earlier.
Thank you so much. Any more?
Greg Whitmore, North Road. Couple, just a couple of things. So the first one, audio and video, the audio and video for people at home seems to be an issue often enough. It was an issue last week and it just seems to come up all the time. I'll go home and I'll look at the page and people will say, I'm at home, I can't hear anything. I can't see anything. So it, I mean, it's, people want to know what's going on. So it just, it happens way too often. The other thing, so, you know, the last couple of years, we heard so much about, you know, the term school record, which, I mean, school record isn't a real thing. It's just, you know, kind of a, a term we tend to use. And the school of record in the past has been considered conquered. But as we look forward to the future, and you know, with whatever you're gonna talk about, we talk about high school planning updates. You know, obviously, we know, we've looked at multiple surveys from the town. And, you know, we know that Cobrown is the most requested school by far. I mean, nothing else. So I would hope that as we move forward, we would consider Cobrown to be that school of record. Cobrown has certainly reached out several times over the years and said that they would be willing to take our students, all of our students. And I believe recently they stipulated that it would have to be a staggered approach, which would obviously make sense. You know, we would send them initially, you know, the freshman class and then the freshman and sophomore, and you know, it would take four years to move whatever students decide to go to Cobrown in, which is perfectly reasonable. But of course, you know, if someone's desperate to move, you know, if someone's at Concord and they say, I really want to get in there now, we also should, you know, take that off the table, to say the least. But I would really like to see moving forward, you know, Cobrown to be considered that school of record, you know, and we certainly want to have at least one other option, you know. And if, if the other school, whatever that may be, besides Cobrown says, well, only letting in a certain number of kids, then Cobrown will be the fallback type thing. You know, it would also be great to see MOUs being offered for whoever student wants it. And, you know, kind of, you, you know, we know how that works. You apply, you're on your own type deal. But again, they would have the fallback, which would hopefully be Cobrown. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Linda McNamara, 14 Range Road. I have no children in the school. I am offering, since it seems to be bubbling up to the surface, conversations relative to, in addition, and working on this, and as a structural engineer, I'd like to think I could bring something to the table, even if it's just what questions to ask your architect. I won't, unless I have all the answers, but I might have something to offer in terms of questions to ask. But this format won't work for that. Does that make sense? You know, if I sit here and rattle off questions you already know, but you, this isn't the give and take kind of a situation. So, you know, I think you're talking about having a working session and I don't know how that works, for instance, if I could sit in on the working session and even just listen and, you know, maybe in the background be writing questions, but, or at the end of it asked up, you know, saying, Architect, what do you think about this? But, so I'm, it's much about format. I'm more than happy to help, but sitting here making comments and talking at you is really not my forte. Probably not gonna work for me and not help you a whole lot. And I don't sound very judgmental if I do that, who I think. So just wanted to let you know that I have reached out and that's the offer on the table. I've also been trying to work with, like, again, the group, I'm not sure if there's any bit here that's gonna talk to it at some point, the SDCS, because obviously they want to see something happen. And there needs to be talk about, you know, building consensus in town. An example is I attended it yesterday, DCS, and they all said, well, none of the old people in town are gonna support it. And I'm like, I'm an old person. And I, I supported, I didn't necessarily support, you know, the last thing, but I do support in addition. So I said, I don't think that that's true. But I kind of also know. I'm serving salad at the senior luncheon tomorrow. You know, there, there's a lot of places where I interact with senior people. So it's an opportunity. I'm kind of hoping to maybe work between the two, like even the board and the yes to DCS. But again, kind of almost a bit on the technical side. And then, you know, and also even on building consensus. I mean, mother things is a big to build consensus, you know, maybe we could figure out if the SDCCs are the consensus builders, you know, and talk to the architect, because I have some names of people, that's what they do. And they know who those people are, so when I meet with the architect, I can throw out a name. Okay? So just wanted to let you know.
Great, thank you.
And I'm gonna make a report, because I was in an accident in the background. It was time to go home. I was a fender bender, but, and it was my fault, but I'm gonna go home and lick my wounds.
Anyone else for public comments at this point? Okay. Okay, agenda review. We have several things that we need to add. Do you want to start?
Sure. I have one more consent item, totals of two under 4D, Dale invoices to add to that. We have the transportation numbers back from our transportation RFP that we need to take action on.
So is that, do you want to do that as Jane?
Sure. And then we need to just mention the grant assurances, which can come at the end of that. I can, I'll repeat that when we get there. And then for non-public session, we need to add Smaller C and K.
Okay, great. I also need to add, potentially adding a July meeting to deal with high school stuff, based on what is happening with negotiations. So we will talk about that at the end. Or at the end of the immediate business. Anyone have anything else to add? Voting at DCS. So we did invite Boris Lockman, moderators, et cetera, to come present their case as to why they requested to vote at DCS versus Old Town Hall. I don't see anyone.
And move to table that.
Yeah, I would, I would agree. I would like to hear more from them about plans and things before we vote on the table. Okay, consent agenda. We have a staff request that we, if you have questions about, we need to talk about in non-public. If there are any questions, we can, so we'll take action now. Do people have questions or are we ready to vote?
Can we save the staff until after non-public?
Yeah. And then you have two Dale invoices from May. Okay. I will make a motion to approve the elementary school bus in the amount of $35,614.06. Any discussion? And then I will make a motion to approve. Oh, duh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now I will make a motion to approve the high school bus invoice for May in the amount of $17,449. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chris, can you read those numbers?
No.
What do you want this?
Thank you. Any other consent items? Nope, okay. Review of correspondence, so there was quite a bit of correspondence this week for this meeting. We only review correspondence at the first meeting of the month. So if we get, this is from the entire last month. Do we want to go one by one or just attach them?
I will make sure they're all attached and then the board can decide what discussion you want to have.
Okay. Yes, we will attach all of these to the minutes for this meeting. There is quite a few. Does anyone have anything to discuss related to the correspondence?
Actually, do you mind if I just say one comment? I don't forget. Yes, when we get to budget season, I know that Kevin, this was so helpful, that he sent the schedule so that we had that so early. And Zach, you may have already planned to talk about it at some point, but when they're asking to receive the school budget, we'll just need to keep in mind that you don't see the budget until first or second meeting in November. So them asking for the budget at the beginning of December gives you really no time to work on it, so.
Every year, the NBC puts your schedule together and every year I remind them that the budget goes over when it's complete. And I have some stuff to talk about from the NBC.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay. Anything else for correspondence? Okay, great. Agenda packets, so I put this on so that we could discuss, there was a request, actually, correspondence to make more things available in advance of the meetings. And sort of wanted to open it up to discussion of the board of what, if anything, you would like to see the public have access to before the meetings, or if you like it as it is. One thought was attaching things like correspondence to the agenda, so that we don't have to add them to the minutes afterward. So that if, I don't know, people want to comment on, on that during public comments, it's essentially so that people can make comments in advance of, think about comments in advance of the meeting if they want to do. Yes?
We're playing things that the board doesn't see in advance until the meeting.
Or it's, it's not a thing, even though the board talks about it.
And sees it.
And I, and I think part of, part of what we have struggled with as a board over the last, whatever, X years, is this idea that timeline, pace at which a board, by definition, works is pretty slow. Compared to our society now, everything is sort of now constant, like, I need it now, it's just not how that works.
Unfortunately.
So I don't know that, just because, I don't, I don't know that I see a compelling reason. I would like to hear more of a compelling reason to make a change to the way we've done it, because there are things that we need to make sure are organized and ready to go before we send them. And I don't know that.
Yeah.
I can hear that people are excited about it. It's exciting, it's great to have this enthusiasm, which we haven't had in the past, but they don't know that. We, we ask our staff to get everything together ahead of time, because, I mean, it's, in the end, it's our meeting and people are willing to watch, they're great, you know, invited to watch, but this is, our meeting, this is the pace at which the board works. Sorry about that.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't disagree, and I don't have a specific thought or recommendation. But because someone brought it up, I thought we should discuss it as a board. I think my concern about attaching things to the agenda, the agenda's put out a week in advance. Most of the stuff that we get access to is not available a week in advance. And so I don't want to be accused of not putting things attached to the agenda or any sort of.
Missing something by accident.
Missing something by accident.
And a lot of the information is already on the SEU or the website. All the policies are there. So if there's a policy you want to reference, you can go to the SEU site and key in whatever policy the identifier is, and you can, you can see the current policy if it's listed. So.
Yeah.
Even if you look at this agenda and you try to say, okay, what would you put there? Copy of a Dale invoice in a.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't have any other thoughts. People have comments?
I say leave it alone.
Okay. Welcome to make suggestions in common time, otherwise I think we will leave it as is, attaching correspondence to the minutes.
The benefit to that is that's a legal record of, that's a legal accounting.
Right. Anything else that anyone else has discussed related to the agenda packets? Okay. Facilities update.
Thought you said you weren't gonna be here tonight.
He did.
That's what I asked him.
Thought you were clear about that.
Nope, not tonight.
This is you not being here tonight?
What's that?
This is you not being here tonight?
I'm sorry.
This is, this is you not being here.
Yeah, this is me not being here today. So I didn't know you guys got such a large volume of information from all the emails that I sent it, principal video through the course of two weeks. First couple pages are just the updates on where we stand with some of the projects. The sinkhole that was created two, two or three weeks ago has been repaired.
Does everyone know about the sinkhole? Yeah, on the first baseline.
First base.
This was one of the, the parts of the field that we did not find out 18 feet.
We did that.
Of course.
So that's been repaired and safe now. We also have, a year ago, Homeland Security came out with their grant program for making updates to schools. I've compiled the information for one of their suggestions, which is additional, an additional camera at the main entrance door where people buzz into, and that will create an entire buzz-in system as you enter into the building. So instead of one of the ladies at the front desk having to get up, go all the way outside, they'll be able to look at the person, confirm who they are, find out who and why they're there, and then let them proceed into the building. That proposal's in front of you. The money's already sitting there, I just want you guys to know about it. If you have any questions, and get your approval to submit this to the state.
I didn't make off with so. Well, I was like.
What's the dollar amount on that, Chris?
$15,210.
In its grant money.
In its grant money.
So you're just looking for a blessing?
What?
You're just looking for an approval to send that?
A blessing, yeah.
Does that need to be a motion?
Did you already receive the grant funds for this one, or are you submitting another one?
I'm actually submitting two more.
Oh, okay.
This is the first one. All these need to be submitted by June 30th, and then I have until December of 2024 to complete the projects.
Chris had underestimated the amount and so combined a couple of activities, and so the money, we have all the money, it's not a, it's not an issue, it just wants a blessing.
Right, all the money, nothing has to come from my regular budget.
Right, it's all.
The money is there waiting.
I think just by consensus, it's good to let you know, so that you don't say, why do we waste grant money on putting in a new system in the front? No, no motion, just as long as nobody, nobody has concerns and is, you're okay with proceeding.
These were the three that I put in, were the three top ones made by Homeland Security at their audit back in 2019, 2020. So just following their recommendations. So I'll proceed with entering this into the system and giving the okay to.
Yeah, so you have any comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. Any questions about the upcoming projects or anything like that?
Everyone's still on schedule?
Everybody's on schedule. The, um, the parking lot will happen after July 1st in our new fiscal year, but everybody else is gonna be here either on the 17th, we'll start removing the ballast off of the roof, 19th supplies will be dropped off for the roof, yes, 19th, and 20th, we will have roofers tearing off the high slopes, asphalt singles first, and then go to the lower rubber flat roof.
And paving bids are due on Friday?
9th, yep. Will, will, myself, Amber, and Steve Beach will talk and confirm and put our heads together, come up with the best recommendation for the 21st to submit to you for approval, and then we'll proceed from there.
Awesome.
Are we gonna get a parking lot, Dave?
I think we might.
Yep, and we're taking in Chief Fisher's recommendations for a wider turn as he goes in between the mods, and then a bigger radius towards the back where that boulder is, just to give them a little more room to stay on the asphalt.
Not gonna, not doing more blasting out of that cliff that you're on?
No, we are not doing anything other than paving.
We're actually never putting a shovel on the ground again at DCS.
Oh.
And then the fire alarm panel will be in as soon as the kids are gone, uh, panel, the fixtures.
They will be on site, yep.
So we'll have that wrapped up.
By the, by, by the mid-August, I hope.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you so much, Chris.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. Do you have any other facility updates? Facility committee member?
I had a crazy idea that I shared with Patty the other day, but I don't know if this community's ready for it yet or not.
Oh, thank you. It's gonna leave us hanging.
A, a, a small landing strip for an airplane would be great at the fairgrounds, so it's close to home would be awesome. Now, I, I'll throw it out there, just so people can stew about it. It may or may not be unpopular, but as we talk about how to expand the facility, maybe an option we should look at is putting a new, nice, modern, plumbed modular farm out in the back field. I don't know what else to call it, but you could, you could put four or five units out there that are nice and modern and comfortable and pro septic tank, and we can feed it into the, feed it into the pump chamber, and it would be a way to expand the building, put the middle school outside for their regular classes, a significant, significantly reduced alley. So it's a food for thought that may or may not want to grow legs, but now it's out there.
Thanks. And I think we invited the architects, or are we going to? To the June 21st.
They said they'd be here.
Okay, excellent. So anyone who's interested in potential expansion, addition.
Modular farm.
Modular farm ideas.
The architects would be here. They did ask me to let them know ahead of time, what types of conversations, questions are you looking to have on that meeting? Do you just want their advice on when a project doesn't pass?
Yeah.
What do we do next?
Yeah, and I think, I'm sort of envisioning, I think that they had modeled out potentially smaller ideas. I would love to sort of have a general discussion about what, you know, bare bones we definitely need, right? How many classrooms, how many bathrooms, if we need a nurse's office or whatever, whatever type of OT space or whatever, like what, what we're working on. They might not know.
It may not hurt just to ask them to kind of pull up all those different renderings they did, you know, with 30, just because for this three board members, it didn't necessarily see or were involved in that, but it may trigger some ideas and discussion. May help you get an idea of the different, physically different directions they were proposing that we could go in. I think it's a starting point.
Maybe like a whole recap of, abbreviated recap of the process of like what the engineering study turned out, what the building needs, their proposals, like a, like a two-minute, this is what we went through a couple of years ago?
Maybe a 10-minute of what it was last time as well. I mean, the good thing is, is all, nothing's changed from an engineering standpoint, right? There's things that have been done that are cross, we can cross off the list. Roof's been done, the fire alarm's been done. There's been a bunch of things that were, the doable projects, some of the doable, doable projects that you're building, the existing structure could undertake, we've started undertaking. We're not doing a renovation, but we're, we're making improvements in repairs to, to the existing floor plan.
But if it's a presentation, it's more just for the board to get caught up, not for us?
I think part of it's gonna be catching up new board members, certainly. So maybe part of that is that 10 minutes, this is what we found in an engineering survey. You know, there was a design parameter last time around that was gonna put out to make, say, more modern educational space.
Right, currently it was built in.
In this building and whatever the expansion was. And obviously, maybe that's not what can happen. Okay? So maybe it has to not be bare bones or classrooms and bathrooms, right? I mean, to a certain extent, that, maybe that's, maybe that's what the community can support without. without the enhancements to the education space that we were really trying to put forward. We're trying to redo, we're trying to drastically improve the way that we undertake education. Maybe that's not what the community wants. So.
Does that answer your question? Okay. Anything else for facilities?
I know, I don't know if right now is the time to discuss it, but I know, um, a community member last time had brought up concerns about traffic going in between the modules and the school, and I was hoping we would have some time to talk about that, because I think that is a very valid concern, and I think we'll see if we can come up with other ideas.
For the paving project?
No, not necessarily for the paving project, but just for traffic in and out next year after paving's done, like pickup drop off, yeah.
Pick up, oh, yeah.
So, so I think that's triggered by the fire chief's request that we no longer use the cul-de-sac, or the, or the loop, I guess, for apparent pickup and drop off.
Bigger than slow.
The, uh, the bigger, not the cul-de-sac, not the parking lot, but the.
Yeah, the fire lane.
Don't use that for drop off.
Yeah.
So I think the administration has started having conversations, so could, can we have an update for the board at the next meeting? On any thoughts you have about how we would do that next year?
Thoughts? I mean, we, we, there's certainly the concern about the traffic going past modules, but that road may be the way we route it. Maybe we just gate it off during the day.
Right.
Put a staff member there, like we, we do currently for the, the looped loop.
Yeah.
But we just, we stretch it out and function a little bit differently.
Something, right, right.
I mean, if, if we're able to use that space in the back room or the parking lot, we can swallow a lot of cars.
No, I like, I like the idea. I just wanna make sure that we are.
The kids are safe, yeah. I, I, I think at a minimum, after the parking lot's paved, we should look at having, we should look at putting some sort of gate across that so that we can, we can isolate it, put an OX box lock on it for the fire department, so if they need to open it, they can, but I think we should at a minimum try to keep that separated. And then if we're gonna use that as a road, the staff member that's standing there, sending cars through is able to open it at the end of the day, or, you know, whatever is appropriate.
Yeah. That's good. Anything else? Okay. We are on to high school planning updates. So Danielle and Ellen have been busy. They, um, I'll just give sort of a brief summary, and then Danielle, you can sort of fill us in. Danielle and Ellen are the high school negotiation subcommittee. They have met with two schools. And there will be negotiations planned for July for both of those schools. To answer a question that was brought up in public comments, we're, I don't think we've talked much about this, like in open meetings, but we're struggling with how to, how to get all of this over the finish line for the current seventh graders. They're gonna be starting in eighth grade in September or August?
August.
Um, and you know, we would, as a board, like to have answers to them by the time they start school. It is our hope to have a plan figured out so that in the fall, they can select the school that they're going to, so that for budgeting for all this, we can create an actual budget. It's complicated in that the board doesn't have the authority to sign long-term contracts. So we can't sign, you know, let's say a five or ten-year contract with any particular school that's not voted on. What I don't wanna do is have something, say, all the eighth graders pick their school, and then the voters turn it down, and then they have to do an about-face and figure out a different solution. So what we're sort of struggling with is how to get all of this accomplished so that we can figure it all out. There are a few different options. I don't know them. I mean, I know generally what they are, but, um, we can do short-term contracts, so anything under three years, the board can sign. The caveat to that is the appropriations for those contracts have to be approved by the voters. So that would mean if we have short-term contracts with A, B, and C school, or A and B school, or A school, in order for that contract to become in effect, our operating budget needs to be approved. That is a struggle. So that is like a, a big issue that we're currently navigating, if that's the way that we wanna go. There was also a question about a school of record. We haven't made any decisions about if we are pursuing a particular school of record or not. I don't think it's required. Um, it is, it is often something that is done by school districts. But it requires the contract being approved by the Department of Education. So I think we could do a short-term contract and have it approved as our school of record. But sort of unclear what that would precisely look like. So that's just sort of all the things that we're thinking about. So when it looks like we don't have a, a specific answer yet, or when it looks like we can't tell you exactly what's happening, there are just a lot of things that we're trying to figure out, how we can get the eighth graders a high school that they can go to. And, I mean, that is, that's the struggle. So, so any, anyone have anything to add to that sort of overview?
I think also just that we are also limited with what we can talk about with some stuff right now too, which is why the public doesn't always know what's going on, because when it comes to, you know, negotiations and contracts, we're just limited until that's finalized, I guess, correct?
Yeah, I think, do you mind if I?
Please, please do. So I think it's fine to say that we met with Concord and Co-Brown. Those are the two that we've met with. And I think it's fun, what we're trying to do is work on, um, I'm trying to help Ellen and Danielle work on some notes so that we can share some information with the public, so that we can say, oh, we met, these are things we talked about, these are things we have to think about, but not, obviously, you don't ever wanna publish your negotiations and what your, the specifics are that you're trying to work out at this point, but just as, give as much information, be as transparent as possible without talking about the negotiation piece itself. So, um, we're kind of playing with that right now, and I wanna make sure that, um, Co-Brown and Concord are comfortable, that if we share our conversation, they know that we're gonna share, and they're okay with that. So just trying to find a new way to give as much information as we can so that people don't feel like just like secret meetings, and they have no idea what ahead we're talking about, thinking about. We're working on that, and hopefully we can give you some notes from those two conversations soon.
So we are working on it? We think about it every day, I'm sure.
I don't know if it's okay to add to. I know there's a community member that has asked about the schools coming and giving presentations, and we have been asking about that. I don't know if I can talk to that. Okay, um, as, as far as Co-Brown, what they said is, um, they have a pretty set schedule for orientation when kids decide to go there. They sounded like they might work with us on possibly coming. They weren't jumping at the bit, though. Um, Concord was. So I just wanted to say that, you know, we are asking them, we are asking to try to figure that out. It looks like that we probably would not have them come until the fall, early in the year, when kids are getting ready to make decisions that parents can learn about it and, and, you know, have that information before they go and make a decision. So I just wanna say that we are, we are hearing the public, and we are working on this stuff.
Um, is there any other details from either the meetings that you want to share, or the?
I don't think, yeah, I, I'd rather like get some notes and make sure we're sharing what we should be sharing, and that we can.
Okay, that's fine. Um, do we have an anticipated time of when we would have the notes, and are, do we put those on the SAU website?
Yeah, we, I mean, we can post them on, in the high school section, and then you have a Facebook page now, so.
Yes, okay.
You can put them out there and make sure people know they're there or remember they are.
Are you getting a lot, I don't go on there, so are you getting a lot of?
Engagement?
Following and on the school board stuff?
No. Okay. I, I generally.
People might share it and you just don't know. Yeah, I have posted the agendas and some other information, but it has, I have not posted all that much. But I can certainly post the notes when we have, do you think, like within the next few days?
Okay, yeah.
Any questions, uh, high school stuff? Having fun?
I guess I can make one more comment too.
Yeah.
I guess to add to what Kendra had said earlier, I know there's been a lot of discussion about, you know, opening up choice to a lot of different schools, and I think it was said in the beginning, and I think just kind of reiterating, right now, we're trying to keep it a bit of a narrow choice as we dip our toes into this program. You know, and see where this goes. If it is something that can be worked out and it's wanted by the public, then as we move forward, I think we can look at other options, but right now we are trying to keep this narrow, just to kind of keep it manageable and somewhat easier to do.
There are also a lot of constraints in terms of transportation and special ed transportation, so like a student with an IEP, we are obligated to give them transportation to the high school on days that they have services. So if we have six different schools that we're sending kids to, it gets very impossible for us to arrange transportation for all of those students to all the different schools and do it in a way that is conscientious of the taxpayers in town and, um, that is fair to people. So those are some of the constraints that we're dealing with, but there are, there are many. Um, anything else? Okay. Do you wanna give the FY twenty-three update?
Oh, yes. Um, so I did, um, a grid. Someone always requested that I have some numbers prepared for you ahead of time. The, the, um, the update, um, for fiscal year end at this point is five hundred fifty-nine thousand eight sixty-five.
Can we call that five sixty?
Call it whatever you want, round it, or however you'd like. That's what we know as of right now. Obviously, we just talked about, you know, Trish has to enter an invoice for fixing the sinkhole. It's probably only a couple of thousand dollars, but you know, there will be stuff that comes in that we didn't anticipate. There may be things that we think we have to spend that we don't, so that number will certainly change, but hopefully not too much. Yes.
We just approved for transportation bills, or is those in the fire system?
Yes, we were, we, we, we put a PO for the year, and that's what we predict, so, yeah.
Okay.
Anything that we think we're gonna spend is already in comber here.
Okay.
So. And then wanna remind you, your retainage is up to three hundred two thousand six eighty-five. The money for the trust funds on the second sheet, if I can, or the spreadsheet, if I can just go over that and let you know how I did that and trying to break this down for you. So I took the sheet that Amber put in the budget binders, um, so these, that was as of December seventh, twenty twenty-two, it shouldn't be that different. It would just be like fees and interest may, may change those numbers a little bit. Huh? Oh, I thought you didn't have it. So the balance for the school facilities repair at that time in December, after the million dollars was put in, was one million three hundred thirty-five thousand, I'm gonna round numbers. We had the public hearing, withdrew the money for the septic system. That was five hundred twenty-eight thousand eight fifty-five. The, this is the number that has to change because I forgot to get an update from Trish ahead of time. My fault. Fire panel balance, so the total was one eighty-eight, six fifty. We paid some money out of the budget, leaving a balance of one forty-one, but I missed a couple of invoices, so we actually, that number is gonna help us because we've already paid another twenty-four thousand six hundred. So the balance isn't really one forty-one. You have to subtract out twenty-four six that we've already paid for. Uh, I missed those two invoices. And then your roofs, roof estimate was just over six hundred thirteen thousand. And then you will get a July first transfer raised by taxation of four hundred thousand dollars. So with all of that, it would leave you with, uh, four fifty-one, six, roughly.
Plus the twenty-five.
Yeah, plus another twenty-five.
So about four seventy-five.
Yeah, four seventy-five. Um, it's for that trust fund. And then, um, there is a new trust fund, Building Renovation and Site Improvement Fund, to be funded from surplus after the books close on July first. That was a hundred thousand dollars. You have the special ed trust fund, the balance in December was two, thir, two hundred thirteen thousand three hundred. You have a July first transfer from surplus of a hundred thousand. That will make that trust fund at like three thirteen, three hundred thirteen thousand three hundred. The school facility paving plan had a balance of seventy-one thousand five eighty. You have a transfer on July first from surplus of a hundred thousand dollars. The balance in there will be one seventy-one, five eighty. And then I did list the other four that you have, just so that you see, there's not gonna be any activity on those that's planned, but just one, do you have it on my sheet?
So on the, the school, the capital reserve fund for the school, did we start that with two fifty? Was that the number?
The school facilities repair?
The school addition capital reserve fund.
Oh, um.
That was two fifty we started with, right? Does that sound right?
That sounds right.
So I think it is certainly enough there for the board to make another runner project if they decide to. Can we go back to the current estimated surplus?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we have five sixty estimated. There's three hundred K coming out, leaving us with two sixty. And then we need to get into retainage if and or how much after the books close. But at the moment, we've basically used it all. Right?
Yeah.
Do you guys, have you understood, have you talked about retainage? Are you guys familiar with retainage?
Yes, and we, our retainage went down to zero.
We retained nothing last year because of the way it works.
Right, the one million.
So typically, historically, we've had, say, if it's two hundred thousand dollars, we had two hundred thousand dollars that was retained that goes back in, and then we just take a different two hundred thousand dollars and put it back over here. We don't have the money to go back in, but we also don't have anything retained. We really shouldn't, so we're probably gonna wanna look at depleting the balance.
Yeah.
Or close to it in the retainage after the books close.
Yes. Do we need to do something about that?
We won't vote on that until it looks closed, and we know exactly how much you. I mean, you could take a vote right now for an amount, but it kinda makes more sense to wait and see what actually happens before you start
Sure.
making decisions. Okay. And yes, Zach, I looked, you did start that with two hundred fifty thousand.
Thank you. So we use a little estimate, a little estimate, to do the engineering plus all of it.
Like one oh nine, six ten is the.
Yeah, and, and a big chunk of that. Uh, actually, we had some in here and like. Yeah.
Okay, we are on to transportation updates. I put in the drive for you. Um, I did a memo, and then I put the spreadsheet. I asked Amber to just put the whole, all of you on one spreadsheet, it was easier. So the transportation RPs were out, and we only got one bid, which nobody is surprised by, um, of our current provider. I asked Amber to put on a sheet for you what we budgeted for transportation versus what the actual bid came in at. And some districts are making out, some districts are falling short. But your number, you should not be as concerned with because, I don't think, because the NBC did add another bus that we will, I would say there was a very slim chance of having, considering the shortages that we're still facing, so while it would be nice if we had that extra bus, I don't know that that's gonna come to fruition. So you may still carry a surplus in your transportation line. We'll know that, uh, closer to the start of school.
Okay, that's all right.
Yeah, go ahead.
The NBC added a bus to the proposed budget. Did it, it didn't pass? No, but the proposed budget had killed the bus.
So, yeah, it was put back in, but I think it was still in the default, wasn't it?
Then at deliberative, it got added back in.
There was a bunch of things.
But the default, right, we go, we got the default, but I think that bus was in the default. So, yeah, so it doesn't really, yeah, you're right. That doesn't, didn't really impact anything, you're right. We got defaults. Yeah, and, but it's still the same concept that we probably won't have it. Yeah, thank you. And then we got one bid for special education transportation from our current special education transportation provider. The good news is the rates don't go up a whole lot over three years. And while it seems that everything is covered, the worry comes in, and what we've spoken to you about is when students come and go, because that's when we now would go back to our company and say, oh my gosh, we now have a student coming to us from this place, and they need to get to this place. And they say, well, we gave you pricing for the students you gave us. We don't have any extra buses. We don't have any extra drivers. And they say, well, we gave you pricing for the students you gave us. We don't have any extra buses. We don't have any extra drivers. That's when we have to start shopping around. That's when we encounter those six hundred dollar day if you want your student to get there. So that's my worry for our budget, our future budgets is, is the kids that move around and we haven't planned for. So that's where we can really get into a budgetary issue. Um, but it's good that you have trust and it's good if you're going to have retainage because then, um, we would have
So if I'm, am I reading this right? Or am I reading the three eighty-eight that I'm seeing as our current Deerfield on that spreadsheet, the three eighty-eight, five nineteen?
Yes.
Do you have our budget? That number doesn't seem sound right.
I do not have your budget.
Because we're seeing a twenty-seven, twenty-eight percent increase versus ten, fifteen percent for everybody else. We didn't ask for more buses. So I'm wondering if that's the.
I, I, maybe she did the current buses. Maybe it's not apples to apples. Maybe it's your, what you're actually getting for busing versus.
I just want to see that out of the budget if we can.
Yeah. Yeah. That's what you're saying.
Because otherwise, that's a pretty substantial smack.
It doesn't seem, yeah. I think Amber mentioned that that increase wasn't really increased because of the number of buses you have, but it's good. We should look at the budget.
That's what the number is.
Yeah.
So the high school, high school transportation is, we, we have two, so gosh, that's twenty, hold it on twenty-two, twenty-three. Two twenty-five, four fifty-two.
For high school?
For high school, and that's two buses.
It's two buses.
And then, um.
Was there, there was a, a dollar amount of the cost per bus in the budget, if I recall correctly?
In the notes, is there?
It just says in transportation contract, include seven buses. The default for twenty-three, twenty-four is four sixty-four, one seventeen.
Four sixty-four, one seventeen. So it's a.
That's seven buses.
That's seven buses, right.
So that first line, that first column has to be less than seven.
Right, that's, that first column is sixteen, sixteen.
That's why I think you're saying that.
So four, so it's really a thirty thousand dollar increase-ish. Which would be more. Yeah, okay. So we really can't do anything of this, just swallow it and take it, correct?
Yeah, and my, my memo to you, um, just because Amber asked me to point out that they did tell her, um, if people didn't like the bigger increase on the first year and you wanted to renegotiate lowering the first year and increasing the subsequent two years, you could perhaps have that conversation. And then they, she wanted to know if you wanted to see if you could lower the increase by pursuing a five-year contract. We've already had two boards vote on their contracts and they, neither board has chosen to pursue either of those options. So just for your information, do what you feel like with that.
Do we need to vote on these things?
Okay.
Yes.
Um, not going to get too far into the history of this, but is it safe to say that alternatives are the dead?
Um, actually, Amy Manzelli at the Pembroke School Board, um, meeting last evening reported out on some information gathering she's doing around, um, electric buses. She's found a company that actually has a lease program that you can, there's, it's sounded very complicated to me. She's gathering more information. She's not ready to bring it. She wants to bring it up to the full board eventually to see if it's a viable option. I don't have a lot of information at this point, but I, she is looking. She thinks there's a significant amount of grant money that could be used for that, so.
The district, she, she brainstormed that the district would lease the buses as a personnel itself.
There's, there's a couple of different options that I, she just did a very high level.
Sounds like a district transportation.
Yeah, it's, it's, um.
Sounds oddly like something that's been brought up.
There, and there needs to be a depot for it. So she did mention that she knew Deerfield had plans, so. More, I just wanted you to know it's not dead. The conversation is happening.
It's totally dead. All right.
I don't know where it's going.
Not totally dead, but not in the near future.
The only reason I bring that up is that is a three-year, is even a three-year contract, maybe it's a two-year contract. Are there other things you want to keep considering?
I just, we, we've always had language we can break in.
I can't think of languages. We, and we, we added a lot of language too, about breach of contract.
They're going to breach the contract anyway. They're going to be backed up against the wall. We're still going to have to sit there and swallow it, deal with it. So why does it matter?
I can't imagine anything would happen before three years.
Right.
This project, yeah. Um, okay. So do you need to approve both, um, regular education and special education? Do you need separate motions? If you are okay with putting together, that's fine.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the bids. What do you call these?
Just call it the transportation.
The transportation.
Contract.
Contract for regular and special education.
I'm not seconding it because I hear everything about that.
Um, any discussion?
So I'm sorry. I second it, yes.
I don't know if there's, there's much to talk about here. Other than the only question I had was, um, but that hasn't been talked about in the past. But the only question I had is, um, the uncertainty on our end is the whole high school question. And so do we, not that they would change anything here, I think in terms of cost savings, but maybe it would, I don't know, but is it time for us to consider or look into rerouting our high school buses to just go through town, just might make a couple stops? Parents and their kids get themselves to the main stops.
I think that's great once we figure out how many buses we don't have in August.
But if it's August third meeting, third week, it's way too late to make any changes. And nothing's happening in July, not nothing, I don't mean that. But, you know, then we get, we're up against the wall and we have to prove whatever it is. And the time for that conversation, I'm afraid, is not soon.
So, so next year, our kids are going to Concord. So as far as next year goes, there isn't really a need to change because your kids are going to Concord.
But if something's going to change the following year, maybe next year is like a baby step or something. It's time to like make some sort of adjustment. Because something big the next year might change. We don't know. We have no idea.
Right, but why reduce the services next year if it's unnecessary? Maybe that's part of the planning for the high school.
Well, you're talking about just looking at central pickup locations for Concord for next year.
I'm talking about, yeah, an hour bus ride.
Yeah.
Looping all the way through Deerfield.
Right.
Rather than a quicker bus ride.
Just a couple stops.
Stopping.
Your, your, your intent is to shorten up the transit time as much as possible.
Right, efficiency, yeah, I think there is, is worth considering sometimes.
When does Dale need that kind of information?
Um, they propose the stops in the first August meeting, so the second or third. If you want, I can ask Kelly to come with some suggestions about changing up the routes. What, what it would look like if there were just a couple of central locations, if you want. I can just tell her because I've.
Maybe that's the way to do it, just say, present both and present three stops for each one of the high school buses.
I would love like sample.
Or four stops. Four stops, you know, a here, a here, a here, and a here for both buses. What's that you refer?
But totally playing that out, like mapping that out with us student, let's say, at this location on whatever, South Road, let's say. And getting to some place and then the trip, what would be the total time for that student versus another student who already has to go to whatever. There's, there's such, I think, disparity right now across town where there's, I mean, they're all long bus rides, that's high school, but there is a fair amount, depending on where you are on the bus.
Six fifteen goes past my house every morning. Well, one in the dark.
Yeah, five fifty-two is when we have to leave the house to drive down to Mr. Mike's to get.
To get the bus.
So, you know, it's not good for anybody, I don't think. But no, that's what it is. That's where we live. But is there a way to, is it worth looking at? Is really the only question I'm asking.
Yeah, I mean, does that impact price at all? I assume not. It shouldn't, okay. I mean, I definitely want to look at it. I've gotten a few requests to do centralized stops. So I think it's definitely something to look at.
Maybe the other option is to just ask, it's another thought, is the last stop in town? Make that decentralized stop. So anybody that just wants to send me go catch the last stop in town with my kids.
Yeah.
Right? So if you can't get your kid to.
The closest one.
Right.
To go to the last one if you wanted to.
Or if you don't, uh, uh, yeah, if you can't get your kid to the closest one and you want it to go by like it has, great. Otherwise, if you're, if you say, I want to give my kid the extra twenty or thirty minutes of sleep, I'll meet the bus at the gate for whatever, the gate for VZ, whatever it is, right? Whatever that spot is. As it's headed out of town.
Yeah.
But you either get it or you don't. You miss it by a minute. You're driving.
Okay, so we do have a motion pending. Did we get a second? Yes, did you? Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor? I.
I.
I'm voting no. Just on the spread.
Three one?
Three yes, one no.
Okay, then we have grant assurances. Yes.
So our grant assurances each year, we have, um, we have to sign initial and sign, um, our assurances that we will follow the federal rules that allow us to get grant funding, such as we will not discriminate. Um, they're all the rules and regulations that we follow, but we need to sign assurances. And the Department of Education started several years ago, asking that that get mentioned at a board meeting. We have to put the date on the form that we talked about it at the board meeting. Um, and then the school board was added as a signer onto those grant assurances, um, to make sure that you're aware that we need to be following those regulations or it could impact the funding that we receive. So that is to be captured in the minutes and then Kendra will need to initial each page of the assurances and sign.
Need a motion for us to authorize to be assigned?
No, which is used to be discussed at the meeting and, and noted in the minutes.
Okay. Cool. So I know that historically, there has not been a July meeting for the school board. I do think because of the high school situation and impending negotiations and things like that, I do think it would be wise to schedule a meeting later in July. Um, if you are, I would propose the keeping the third Wednesday, which I believe is July nineteenth. We, you know, if, let's say, negotiations are moved or we're not ready to vote on anything related to them, we can always slot a different date or move it to the first day to get them, I guess, but, um, I would like to put something on the calendar if people are. Are you around?
Yeah, I can, I mean, yeah, I can, I can set it up and schedule it right now. I think.
Okay.
Go pull me down and I will try to make it.
Anything else?
I've done meetings before.
That's fine. I, it wasn't on the agenda. I just added it.
But I, it's on my calendar, presumably I'm not interfering with something.
Okay, and if we, we have another meeting in June, so at our next meeting, if there's conflicts, if people have vacations, we can certainly discuss it again. But for now, we will tentatively plan to meet July nineteenth.
You're available?
I am. Okay. We are on to board reports. PTO, would you like to present?
Hello. Just, um, a couple of updates because we're kind of wrapping up the year already. Teacher and staff appreciation is like our grand finale and then it's all like downhill after that.
I was thinking that when you walked in. This is cool.
We did have our hanging basket sale though, and that went really, really well. The third graders sold their seedlings and holy mackerel, they had so many plants. They did such a great job. They were great. I had to buy a whole bunch. Told my husband he's in charge because I kill them all, so hopefully they live. Then we did have our last meeting of the year already where we elected our new board. So we were really fortunate to have some new people step up into positions. So we're really looking forward to a great year. Um, and we've already started looking ahead to our dates for next year. So we are already looking forward to the back to school barbecue once that's decided. And we've looked at some dates for selling some mums on September sixteenth, um, with Piney Woods this time. Um, we're trying to stay local. We use Chatterbrook for the spring sale and their stuff was fantastic. They were absolutely gorgeous. So I know Piney Woods will do just as well with the mums. We're just working out some details. And October seventh, of course, will be gone soon. People are already anxious for the year soon.
I heard they wanted a spring here until.
I know. That's a lot of work. And it'd be too close together, I'm afraid, but it's something we can finally think about.
Um, we do need to talk about it one of the meetings, the back to school barbecue.
Actually, we can probably decide now.
Okay, it's usually always unseen.
It's usually the first day the teachers are back because the second day.
It's like forceful.
Were you, were you doing the day that they tell us we're doing?
But we're unknown. I've heard criticism of that.
So that's a minor. I was just, I had my, from my brain had a cramp for a moment. So I was like, wait, it's on Monday? No, it's on Monday. So the twenty-eighth is the first day for, for all staff, oh, teachers. And then the twenty-ninth would be the first day for all staff, certified and non-certified. And then Wednesday is first day for students, Wednesday, Thursday.
So we do August, so Monday, the twenty-eighth?
So you're doing your Monday, twenty-eighth.
Yes, that's fine.
If your family changes a year.
It's going to be my last one.
I think you're going to make special guest appearances just to cook some burgers going forward.
It takes six or seven days to get the smell of burger out of your skin. I don't, I don't know. It's, I'll come visit. I'll have a burger.
I know. I had asked Kendra for more discussion around the barbecue because being on the PTO too, I know there's been some concern about like the communication with the board and the PTO, like the day before the day of, like, we need the appropriate, did anybody get the pro, like, just just kind of getting the details, yeah.
So we can, if it's enough time, you think we can put that on the agenda for August?
Yeah.
For being in August?
Yeah, it's probably a good idea to have like an annual checklist of all the things we do and, yeah, the last minute think about and then.
Trish has, Trish has.
You have one?
Trish has.
Yeah.
And then it can be on your do.
I think a major step is always Trish takes care of it with Meredith. They order all the food. We only get a lot of mountains and cookies.
Okay.
It was, it was those last minute things, like the day of, we did the breakfast for the teachers and then we're like, oh, no, we don't have an approval page. So I'm like running around trying to find somewhere to vote for.
Yes, well, then we realized we didn't have enough and I happened to have our own tank in the truck and we had to put my tank on one of the grills because they take four and I didn't mail them. They each take two.
So we will.
Little things I didn't know.
We'll put it on the agenda for our first August meeting and hopefully figure out some of those details in advance.
Four to seven, is that usually about the time? Four o'clock start.
That sounds.
To seven, six or seven. We, I know that everybody comes early, like three o'clock is when setup starts, but I'm good.
Yep.
I just put it on DCS school calendar.
It's official.
It'll be good because the teachers are always asking me. I'm like, oh.
It's so far away, but yes, not far away at all.
Mm-hmm, comes quick.
All right. Thank you so much. Have a good summer. Okay. Executive board, so we did have, um, an exec board meeting on May tenth. Let me see. I don't know what is usually shared with the whole board, so stop me if I'm sure to share it. Um, we got an update about the financial audits. The auditing consultants are coming to the next exec board meeting, which is next, like, the nineteenth. So they're going to give an update. Deerfield, the audit for Deerfield fiscal year twenty is beginning soon, and then we will still need to do fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two. Our audits for twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen are done. They're wrapping up several different schools now. Um, they're hoping to conquer all of them shortly. We did make a motion to add additional funds for tech, or tech fund. They need servers and an NAS. We did explain it at the meeting. I don't think I could explain it again.
I'm going to expand that a little bit.
Sure.
So we have, um, that was to, for funds from the fund balance. We set aside money for technology so the budget doesn't take a big hit each year. So Josh was ready to order that. So it was already set aside in the fund balance and the board gave permission for him to move ahead with that.
Great. Then there was, we talked about who we were hiring? Okay, there was a new, um, school psychologist who was hired who will be working with DCS. No. I probably could find it for you. But I don't have it. I was just, I'll just. I, I'll get it figured out. I have it somewhere. Um, and that's what I have. Um, and that's what I have as updates. If you have anything else, I don't, I know you want to fit it, but. Those were the main issues. We also talked about um, the website. And there were various complaints from the various schools about the SharePoint website situation. Um, so I think we're gonna be starting to explore that again.
That, that requires Josh's attendance.
SharePoint, where the, where the policies are? Okay, yeah.
Yeah, just felt like you can't, the main gripe was that you can't copy the URL and link it to something.
You have to download the document and share that.
Yeah, or you have to direct people to the website to click on the link, et cetera. So it's a gripe filled around SAU fifty-three. Yes.
Uh, Director of C and I, Chris Motika, is there, do we move, have we gone a little?
Yes, um, so Amy Parkinson, who is the curriculum director at the high school.
Yeah.
Is Charlie Missy. That's why I first. Yep.
And will be involved in a similar way with DCS?
Yep, yep, and she's doing the new teacher orientation this year in August. She's already started, may or may not have started downloading a little, a little bit with us. Um, she's right downstairs, so.
Great.
Yep.
Awesome. That is it. And principals report.
Okay, uh, this covers May fourth to, to current date today, June seventh. Uh, May was a busy month. Uh, we had our physical education skateboard unit. Again, thank you to Focus Nancy. She came to our staff meeting today to thank um, the DCS staff that participated in the Turkey Tray. Um, they were thrilled with how much money they earned through Focus this year. Second, the second highest amount to the time that they had the car. I don't know. So, but everybody else seemed to know about that, so.
There was a car.
There was a car.
A while.
A ton of money, uh, but this was, this was at equally as high, if they had a car, I'm sure, it was low, not the ceiling. Um, so Focus did um, provide funding for this, this PE team to put together the skateboard unit. The kids had a blast. Um, also during the month of May, we had um, Nature on Wheels came in West with our sixth graders. They had a four day uh, in-house field trip, but really outside because it was in the outdoor classroom. Um, I don't know if you remember that week, it was the week that was pouring rain. So they did some things inside and some things outside, but when you're in the woods, it doesn't rain. I don't know if you know that. It just doesn't rain. Um, we had our annual art show. We had our Deerfield uh, school book fair. Uh, this year, Mrs. Moss, you raised the, used the money to purchase, to, to have uh, author visits and she, we had a ton of author visits this year. Um, so I'm pretty sure that's what she's planning for next year as well. Um, and we had the Turkey Tray back in our building, which has not been in the building for a few years. So um, we certainly thank Mr. West and Mrs. Radcliffe for giving up their classroom space for that. Uh, and the PTO um, did wrap up there. It is the big, I feel like I haven't seen you at all since the teacher appreciation, staff appreciation. Uh, demonstrated success, finished up with their contract with us. Uh, we do have a few more meetings with them. Um, they, as you know, we're in Thailand, uh, working with grades K through eight on PLCs, professional learning communities. Uh, they will do some work with us also in the fall. And they also helped with our MTSS, multi-tiered system of support for tier one, tier two, two, three intervention teams. So uh, they are gonna, um, that, we have one more meeting with them, um, that got canceled, so we rescheduled it for September for them to come in um, and help us with that, support us with that. Uh, the tier one intervention team, which basically is um, it's interventions at, for all students at all levels, um, in maybe all classrooms. Um, plans the professional development day for June nineteenth. Uh, we're gonna do some work with community circles and um, talking about morning meetings and greetings and group activities and building community and um, aligning some advisory with that, with that. So that will be um, our June nineteen PD day. Um, we'll, we'll also have a barbecue luncheon and we will try um, time in the afternoon for teachers to clean out their classrooms. Um, we have had a busy month of interviews. I think Patty has a few names to move forward to the um, board tonight. So we are excited for their, for some new folks to be coming onboard. Our seventh graders had a wonderful trip to Mero Vista, which was a outdoor camp type, nature's classroom type. Um, it was, it's a beautiful facility that, it's the first time our school's been there and they loved, they loved it. Kind of planning on going back in, in the twenty twenty-four school year. We had several track and field events. Um, our kids went, made it to championships. Our kids did a wonderful job placing in a lot of events. A huge thank you to the coaches and to all the students that participated. And a huge thank you to all the families throughout the course of the year that really took a village to get our kids to sporting events and because we can have buses again and they were, I mean, every, every event, we, you can hear the kids being called out to, you know, so and so and so and so and so and so all going in one car and really everybody pitched in to, to get our kids to the events that um, they needed to get to, so we appreciate that. Uh, we had some field trips this month. On Thursday, the eighteenth, our second graders went to the Seaco Science Center. On the nineteenth, our fifth graders took their infamous field trip to Boston where they get on the train and they take the train to the, they take a bus to the train and the train to Boston and uh, they had a wonderful trip. Uh, we did meet on Monday, um, the twenty-second of, of May, CRB, the Curriculum Review Board met and all, um, could that report as well because Ellen's not here. She's the representative, but she's not here. Um, right now our teachers are busy working on class placement and finishing up the report cards. Uh, we had our, our wonderful spring concerts. Wednesday, the twenty-fourth was band and chorus and then Thursday, the twenty-fifth was our first and fourth grade. Uh, thank you to all the families that participated in that. And obviously to Mr. Trong and Mrs. Davis. Um, on Friday, the twenty-sixth, our first graders took a field trip to Kristen McCullough. I ca, I'm telling you something, it didn't, we could have taken a trip to the town hall and they would have been like, yes! There's nothing like a field trip lunch, right? So their biggest uh, thrill was the gift shop of, of course. Um, but there were a few other hi- highlights for the, for the field trip. Our kindergartners had Wildlife Encounters visit here, another in-house field trip, and they had a wonderful uh, visit by Wildlife Encounters. Um, our band and chorus were able to have a celebration night, um, Thursday, the first. They had a movie night. I believe, um, our band and chorus kids, they could mount Washington trip, um, trip. And it just wasn't working out this year. So Melissa, Mrs. Davis and Mr. Trong planned a nice celebration for, for those kids for all their hard work. All right, on June second, uh, we had a Cliff Author Visit. The Cliff Grant paid for uh, the, the public library in town. Worked with um, Mrs. Moss, you in our school library and brought a few more authors for a visit. John Stephen Green was here and he met with our kindergarten through sixth graders throughout the course of the day. And the nice thing about the Cliff Author Visit is kids get a book at the end of the um, visit. Our girls on their run had their five K celebration on Saturday, the third. And on Monday, the fifth, we had our new little kindergarteners in the building uh, for kindergarten kickoff. So that was a lot of fun. We had um, children and their grownups that came and the children went off with the kindergarten teachers for about an hour or so. And the grownups stayed in the cafeteria, met some of the um, staff in the building. And uh, we took a tour. We even took them through the middle school. Um, but it was, okay, nothing, nothing bad happened. Nothing bad happened at all. Um, on June fifth, uh, Monday, June fifth, our second graders actually were in here. It's so nice to have the, be able to move the bookcases out of the way because we fit the whole second grade in here. And uh, they presented uh, their animal reports. So their second grade zoo was in the house uh, for our celebration. And then today, our eighth graders went off to New York City in this smog-filled New York City. They've been, so we've gotten a few pictures of the Canadian wildfires that have just seeped into the city. So I don't think it's, I don't know. But they were so excited to go and it was great seeing them off. So some upcoming events, we have Field Day this Friday. Our Dare um, graduation will be this Friday. Dare Officer Mallett comes and works with our fifth graders. He's done that for a few years now. Uh, so they have their Dare graduation and we appreciate the, we, we've a couple of officers come over and usually she comes over to graduate the kids. Next week, um, Thursday, Tuesday, the thirteenth is the eighth grade semi. Can you believe it? Fourteenth is graduation. And then um, the fourteenth or seventh graders will take a field trip to Canby.
You know what time the graduation is?
Six.
So I had written down. I told Kendra she should try.
Good question. Six o'clock.
Okay.
Um, and then our preschoolers will also be finishing up. They're gonna have their preschool party in the park uh, next week, on Wednesday and Thursday. And Friday is our last day of school. We prepared to leave email town one at last stage of school.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Do you want to move right into CRB?
Yes. Uh, so we had our CRB meeting on, uh, let's see. Uh, May twenty-second, we had it in the library and uh, basically the, uh, Mrs. Petroselli is the CRB um, coordinator. She's the representative. She does, she does all the work. Uh, so we did updates from all of the, the curriculum areas. Um, I, some, we may not know this, but um, we have, when, when Chris Motika was here, he developed a curriculum review cycle. So every one of our uh, curriculum areas goes through a seven-year cycle. Uh, ranging from a rollout in reflection, one, the next year would be an evaluation, the next year would be a mid-cycle review. The next year would be uh, preliminary changes. Then, then they develop draft plan the following year and they review the plan and then um, finalize the plan for CRB and board approval. So the seven, every seven years we're cycling through our curriculums. Uh, so each, each curriculum um, representative that was at the, at the meeting reviewed where they were in their plan for next year. Um, and basically we have uh, for the twenty-three, twenty-four year, just so you're aware, we will have library. It's a big one. We haven't had, we didn't have anybody this year, but next year we have library, art, music and wellness. Health, the wellness and health are together. So that will be um, a big year next year. Lots of, lots of curriculum's being worked on. Um, there was requests that we have a curriculum meeting that we, I put this, uh, all the teachers are on a curriculum committee throughout the, um, throughout the year. Um, sometimes we fit in a, a meeting, sometimes we can did two in, sometimes we can get three, but they did request to have a meeting prior to the first CRB meeting, which is uh, February, uh, sorry, October twenty-third um, of twenty twenty-three is the first CRB meeting. That's about where we are.
Cool.
Yeah.
Awesome. Um, so we are on to policies. Nope, NBC, props you off early.
Kendra, I have one more thing. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Come on, please.
I almost forgot. Trish, you've got to keep me on track. Um, we, every year around this time, we start to get our eighth grade graduation costs coming in. So we ordered caps and gowns, um, and that is an expense that we were not prepared for. Um, so between that, the DJ for the semi, food items for the semi, rental tables, um, and other supplies. Mr. Grieve is thinking we're gonna need about between three thousand and thirty-two hundred. Right, Trish?
Yeah.
Caps and gowns were.
More if you like.
Caps and gowns were, I think, thirteen or sixteen hundred?
They were about sixteen.
Sixteen hundred.
And I know three hundred for the DJ.
Three hundred for the DJ plus tip, Brian said.
Yes, yeah.
Um.
Yeah, it's always, yeah, it's tips. Is that because we got the default budget or is it, did we not put money in or do we not?
Year, every year we've tried to get more money in that line. We have, I think, eight hundred in the commencement line.
And then the default gives us the same.
And just because also from the commencement line comes the awards.
Mm-hmm.
So like I, I, I will not be using all that I put onto the purchaser of the awards. I'll, when I close it out, hopefully we can get them on Monday. Um, some money will go back, probably about two hundred.
So you need thirty-five hundred bucks for that?
Uh, between three and three thousand and thirty-two hundred. It, it's, because there's a range for certain things, so.
Up to thirty-five hundred for.
Second. Sorry, second you. Um, any discussion? Um, I will say there was a lot of um, we hadn't, there was a, there was a thought of not doing caps and gowns this year. Um, there was a lot of people who are very unhappy about that. Um, I got a lot of texts at softball one Saturday morning about it. Um, so we, not we, the administration decided to order caps and gowns. And then I think if we in, if the board at some point wants to direct people to scale down or not have caps and gowns or rethink that, I think that discussion needs to just happen earlier. And parents made aware of not having caps and gowns before, the month before graduation. Um, so that everyone is on the same page with that. But that is why, partially why there's that, that expense that, I mean, we can't do anything about the default budget, but.
Mm-hmm. And just to, just this year, um, the cost did go up. I signed, I signed a three-year contract on the subject. This was the up year and it went up quite a bit. It was approximately thirty dollars.
Got it. Got it. Um. Okay. All in favor of the motion?
All right.
Hi.
Thank you. Now, now I'm down.
Okay.
All right.
NBC.
Okay, so the NBC, about a month ago now, had their organizational meeting. Uh, Terry Roy was uh, nominee's chair. It wasn't by the advisor, it was Maureen Quinn. So that was kind of the first part of it. Uh, the big thing that came out of that is the NBC just expressed a desire or members of the NBC expressed a desire to join in the budget-making process with the school and the select board. They kind of wanted to be involved in the beginning of the process as opposed to the end of it. So I was asked to bring it to the school board and.
What does that mean, join in?
Yeah.
They didn't really know. They wanted to have a conversation. They wanted to, it seemed like they wanted to participate in it more than historically they have.
Do you think they, I know you said you don't know, but I'm still.
I'm reserving the opinion.
Do you think they want maybe for us to be sharing the drafts as we go? Is that?
So the drafts have always been available to them.
So that's easy? Yeah, but I.
They want to be
Set it to that.
Here, is what it's.
Well, okay, so my comment on that is that they will not be up here. They're not elected to the school board. Um, they are welcome, obviously, to come attend all of our meetings. They are welcome to make comments. They are welcome to email us with comments. They're welcome to call us. Um, we can certainly let them know or you can let them know, or we can communicate that there is a draft, that they are welcome to, we can show them where it is. Uh, if they can't navigate the SAU website, um, but that is that is sort of what I would be offering personally. We, we do post everything for about a season throughout the whole season. Every time we have a new draft, we put it right up there. And that goes to anyone in the community, not just the NBC. A lot of people have thoughts, really good thoughts about budget. So we always want to hear from people about what they think.
I think it's, we, we talk about it every year in budget season, but the way that Amber kind of builds the budget, she starts at zero and then builds it up. So it's not, there's nothing there that is not, it's there for a reason. It's there because it's, it's, it's her place in the budget. If it's not, if it doesn't have a reason to be there, it's not salaries, it's not benefits, it's not, it's not accounted for or justified. It doesn't, it's not there. She starts at zero.
Yeah.
You know?
We don't just have a lot of holdover items, just for fun, I guess.
Okay, I'll relay that back.
Okay.
I don't think the next meeting's for a while, but when we do, I don't know.
Sounds good. Anything else?
That was it.
Great.
Um, policies. Um, most of them are on for second reading. Um, the wellness policy, I did go over um, the edits, but I didn't get the red line done for you. It was just we filled them a few blanks. If you want me to read the edits, I can, or you want me to just fill them in and put them on for the next meeting with the others.
I think that's fine.
And then the social media policy, I don't think, I haven't had any um, suggested language changes, so you can reaffirm it as is if you want to, but I know you wanted to take a look because you were doing your Facebook page, but nobody has made any suggestions thus far about something that might want to change.
Yeah. Um, do we need to reaffirm it?
Well, it's been on your desk, so you should just kind of that you, you know, it shows on the policy that you looked at it again with this date.
Um, does anyone want additional time to review it or is anyone ready to reaffirm?
All move, pause the KD. Sure.
Uh, any discussion?
Was that the one that had two different drafts?
I don't think so.
Maybe so.
Yeah, there are two others. One, there's the, there's the. Yeah, the NHJBA version is in there. So I guess I'm, I'm moving, I'm sorry, I'm moving to reaffirm ours. Should discuss that in the motion.
Okay.
Not that any just.
Thank you for. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor? Alright, I. Alright, knocked one off.
Can I call your attention to that slightly different proposal for JJC for your consideration for the next week?
I forgot.
Yes.
That one, the JJC one, looked, I mean, a lot of them, as you mentioned earlier, that it was pretty.
Ancient.
But that was pretty ancient and it was interesting. It looked like, yeah, I wasn't quite sure what it was trying to accomplish from 30 years ago, but, but I, I kept the first several, so I was a hundred percent I didn't change that.
So it's an optional policy unless you feel strongly that you need to have a policy about this. It's a 1995 policy you can delete unless you, like I said, you have strong feelings about student protections in the school that you want to have a board policy about it. I will say I didn't have a strong feeling about it, but I, I do like your additions or your suggested language. I think it's very important to highlight, you know, different celebrations and diversity and all of that in our performances where appropriate, obviously. So I am in favor of it. Having it and having needs. Yeah, okay, so.
So just coming back to.
You need the next time, this is his.
Yeah.
But do you have this one?
It's in the, the packet, not of policy packets, sorry.
I think there's, as I looked at it, I think there's a little language to clean up.
I also, very late today, so I'm sure no one had the opportunity to see it, uploaded some additional language in IJOK. I don't have it with me even, but I think this is a, not a mandatory policy, so we don't have productive at all. It's field trips and internships. I don't think we currently have it as a policy. I added language about the consent process for the parents, the permission slip. Again, I don't know how feasible or appropriate it is, but if people want to see it and look at it before the next reading. Basically, the, I got a lot of comments about requesting that field trips that we go to or places that are hosting us as field trips not put our kids' pictures on their social media or like at least asking parental consent for places to take photographs. Again, we can't always limit people taking pictures of us in public, but if we can, you know, request of people not to post our students on social media, especially where it's a school-funded trip and we have our own policies about photography and stuff. So anyway, I added language. Feel free to.
Did you put it, have it in the drawing?
Very late today. I mean, like.
Did she put it, is that her?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't see it.
Yeah.
Can you make sure you copy me on?
Oh, yeah, I don't.
Sure.
Um, but yeah.
Do you know why it's on here? If we don't have one, was there somebody that wanted it to be?
I believe someone asked to have it add.
I, yeah, I know.
Would you?
Okay.
Yeah. And, and just to make sure everyone's aware, we don't have any authority to stop it. So I, I think what you're asking is to suggest and request and, you know, but if we're out in public and people take pictures and put them on their private pages.
I think the problem is, is when, when those people are then asked to take them down and refuse to, at the request of the parents. I think that's part of the frustration. I think there's another solution. We know the instance when it occurs, when it has occurred, because we've gotten feedback from parents about it afterwards and maybe we exclude that individual who doesn't respect the parent's request and not put pictures of their kids on in the future.
Yeah, I mean, I think it is as a general issue, like problematic.
I think it's, I think it's a good practice, right? I think it's a good practice, but I, I think ultimately the solution is pretty simple.
Are you talking about other parents putting other kids on their Facebook page? Are you talking about going to Plymouth Plantation and Plymouth Plantation putting the pictures on their website?
No, someone taking the picture in public and posting it on their home website, on their own Facebook page.
There's not kind of plantation.
Correct, correct, correct.
People that are there.
People that are there. Okay. Can, can we just use the example that most of the parents have been, so. So a number of parents, this has happened for a number of years, we send a class to Concord. They get a tour of the state house, which is a great experience for the students. It's, it's, the, the person that gives the tour typically likes to take a picture of all of our students afterwards and then places it in 5,000 different spots on Facebook. Has had parents request multiple times that they not do that, not put pictures of their children on the internet. The response from that, that individual has always been, well, they're in public, so too bad. Which to Patty's extent is not wrong, but the same thing is, is, is a solution for this particular instance.
Yeah, but I think, you know, if, if we have a policy or, you know, if we know that there are kids who we don't, who parents do not want pictures of them, we can always request. If we're going to Plymouth Plantation and we say, you know, for one reason or another, this child's parents do not want them on your social media page. We, we as chaperones in school personnel should not be encouraging them to get in a group photo taken by someone to post on their social media. Right. I mean, it's, I don't think we can prevent it in all instances, but I think there is as proactive as you can. Because people are concerned because not only is it identifying the age that the kids are, they're in fourth grade, they go to DCS, they are at this location.
There's a lot of reasons why we should try to prevent it.
Correct. So, so anything about, obviously feel free to change as necessary or you don't have to do it at all. I don't think it's a required policy. Anything else on policies for today? Okay. So we are into informational items.
Uh, no.
None?
None.
Alright, back to public comments.
Hi, Bobby Anne Dosty, Five Brown Road. I want to thank you for bringing that up, Kendra, the policy, because I do think if you're going to say private, personal accounts, you really should say businesses too.
Yep.
Personally, I've had huge issues with the school even posting my child on the public school pages as well as the rec. So if you know that and maybe like a refresher for teachers too, because they constantly take pictures of our kids all day long and they are putting them on their personal TikToks and stuff too, which I found, so that's really nice that you're thinking of that. I want to thank the high school committee for really digging deep. You guys are doing so much work. I know that you've heard a lot of people that come to these meetings say, we want way, like, more than three options. We want, we want the book open, but realistically, I know a lot of parents are by your side and they know that that's a huge undertaking and they're just happy with one more choice. So I appreciate all of your surveys that you've done and now that you've seen repetitively the same answer come forward over and over again, just you giving two options, I'm so appreciative and I know a lot of parents are too. For the busing, thank you Kendra for getting back to me so quickly. Like, I'm, I'm not used to it. I did reply, the survey made it clear multiple times. If busing is only to Concord, and I do understand where you're coming from, that in three years, the busing might just go to Concord, but if you have an influx of a lot of children that want to go to that second school, then within three years, I think that that statement, it's not realistic from the survey point because in two years, you might see, holy cannoli, all these kids want to go to this school. It might be cheaper too. You say, there was a comment made about busing mandated for IEPs and I love that Nate was saying if we consolidate the stops, it could actually decrease your invoices because there's less time on the bus, which means less, you know, pay for that bus route because it's less, the route is smaller and less gas. So it, you know, if you're, if you're driving to one school and your buses have less gasoline or diesel, sorry, and the bus driver's on for less time, you might see a decrease in your invoices, which is a great thing to think about. But thank you for your time and I really appreciate all of you.
Thanks, Ben. Other comments?
Kimberly Black, Meeting House Hill. My only comment about the budget packets would be material that is discussed and voted on in between public comments. If we could have, and I know that that's a huge ask, like Chris's bid items, like stuff that goes out to bid that he's going to talk, like, you know, his agenda says facility updates. I, I can't make a comment before you guys, and I understand you're not aware of it until his facility update, but without opening the floor after that update, we can't make any comments until you've already voted on it. Whether or not you can, you know, review that after again or the next meeting, I'm not sure is possible. But so things like the bid information. There's another note that I put. I think the budget stuff is already on the SAU site, so that was relevant. But, but primarily anything that's really discussed and voted on in between comments at one time. So if it's not something that we can get ahead of time in a, in a packet to know it's something you're talking about and it's something we should bring forward, then perhaps opening the floor for specific conversations after that is an option.
Thank you. Thanks.
Leah McQ, Harvey Road. I just want to follow up with Kim there. That's pretty much the key. It's just making sure we're talking with the community and making sure that they know what the bids are. I think that's what the NBC is looking for as well. To get involved in that aspect, I think things are going to go a lot smoother. We all want to make sure that the updates get done, that need to get done. We just need to be current on sticking to those needs. And I think that's going to come down to having perhaps the woman who was in here earlier, allowing her to be part of perhaps that architect meeting. And, and again, it's going to come down to people needing to step up and be involved and kind of give their opinions on the situation. But I think that's a, you know, Kim really hit the nail on the head with that. The modular farm. You knew I was going to bring it up. So my question is, have any, has anything moved forward with the current modulars? Are we still renting? Is there a proposal to buy? Is that even on the table? Has there been any, any progress on that?
So unfortunately, we're not doing Q and A during comments. We did talk about that in one of our other meetings, like.
The last one? Okay, I'm still waiting on the minutes on that one. I'll go, I'll go over that. So that was my biggest question and we did mention the new hire of a psychologist, I believe I heard that correctly, and we're not releasing names yet? Or can we? Okay, that's okay. That's okay.
I looked it up, doesn't matter. Her name is Jennifer Lang, Langabin, L-A-N-G-E-V-I-N.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
And she's an SAU employee, not a Deerfield.
Yeah, that was, that was my other clarification. Thank you very much. And I think that's it. Just to reiterate, definitely making sure that when things are coming up to vote, that we're kind of, we're talking about what's coming up, you know, what, what changes are being made, like, like HVAC, being specific about the classrooms that we need to expand, whether OT needs expansion and all of that. And I just wanted to ask, I know you're not doing Q and A, but to elaborate on the change that you're making to JJC in reference to the student public performance perhaps, and would we, will we be able to see that draft prior to? Is that anything that will be made to the public?
Yeah, you can send me an email and I'll send it to you.
Okay, that would be perfect. Alright, thank you very much. Thank you for all your work on the high school choice.
I just wanted to. The expulsion rate of co-brown. At one meeting.
So Stacy Marchionni, Meeting House Hill, Road, Deerfield. I think it was the May 3rd meeting. Nate, you had wondered if perhaps co-brown was able to get better stats because they're able, because they're a private school, they're able to expel students. So these are the stats off the state's website and their expulsion rate is zero. Just to clear that up. I think that in part of the meeting that I missed, maybe my comments from the May 3rd meeting were amended. I'm not sure, but my request to Kendra, my specific request, I'll mean, I'll read the email that I sent as regarding.
It is, will also be attached to the.
Okay. So it was the minutes as drafted and as regards my statement during public comments is inaccurate and incomplete. They should include the fact that Zach Langley's interrupted and called me a liar after which exchange occurred. Kindly revise the minutes properly reflect the actual ongoing. So I'm not sure what amendment was made earlier because I missed it, but that was the request that I made, not that my comments be deleted or anything like that. So I don't know. I know you're not taking questions, so I don't know if they were what you did with my comments or what amendment you made, but that was the request that I specifically made. So where my comments struck?
No.
Minutes? Okay. They were not. Okay.
No, we're not doing Q and A.
Right, so, okay, that's fine. So the only thing that I would reiterate was that at that May 3rd meeting, the reason that I was upset was because I felt that parents were being really denigrated by comments saying that they could not understand the gray behind the black and the white stats, like these stats that are on the state's website and that they won't take 30 minutes to review high school options. But in fact, you, you all must know that that's absolutely not the case. Parents are very passionate about high school options. We have been looking at high school options. We buy houses according to school systems. We are intimately interested and involved in what those high schools are and you can see the passion behind people looking to get their kids into co-brown. So it's really frustrating as a parent to hear those kinds of comments. It's dismissive and condescending and really, really unfortunate. And, you know, I, I hope that that, that that ends. I just have a couple of more comments. Nate, specifically tonight, you said that this is our meeting and the public's welcome to attend, but you know, this is our meeting to make things happen. So I think that.
Have a three-minute cutoff?
Yeah. So I would just like to say that if, Kendra, you have a very open attitude as to sharing information and involving the public and I think if that prevails as opposed to the condescension that we've seen in many areas, I think you will get a lot of support for budgets, for school renovations, for the programs that you, that you want to do and how you're approaching high school choice. I really think that that attitude shift will benefit you tremendously. I think the modular farm is a horrible idea and I think.
That's been, it's been three minutes.
A model like hooks it with, with and could happen. They have six school choices.
Okay, any other public comments? Okay, so I will make a motion to go into non-public session pursuant to NHRS A91-A, section 3, section 2, lowercase letters, B, C and K. Do we roll call this?
Yes, you do.
Aye.
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 Yes.